Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. As you noticed, our mayor is missing. He's out currently serving you in Washington DC. So, yeah, give him a hand. Yeah. And he heard that applause, so you're gonna have to do it a little louder because he's on the call. So, hello.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we're gonna be asking Pastor David Anderson from World Life Ministries to come forward and do our prayer. Then we'll have a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Henry Wade, and then we're actually also gonna have the added edition of, or that's two words, right? Same word. The addition of the National Anthem and the Black National Anthem by Edgar Porter. So, let's stand and have our blessing.
Thank you. We appreciate the honor to stand before you all to do the invocation this evening. And so, won't you pray with us? Father, we thank you for the opportunity in this setting to come before you, to honor you and bless you. Father, we pray your blessings on everyone in attendance this evening. And Father, we ask that you would bless those that are, that have the decision-making, authority, responsibility for this city. Father, we pray that you would lead them and guide them. And Father, we pray that as we go into this evening, Father, and the activities of the evening, that you would just allow the, your presence, Father God, to be here with us. And Father, we pray that in this nation, Father, where there are so many that are polarized and so many that are, that feel, Father God, separated, I pray, Father, that you would bring a reunion, you would bring people back together, you would allow people, Father God, to operate in a place of peace, and you will restore joy. Father, we thank you for doing what only you can do. Your word says if you, if we would humble ourselves and turn from our wicked ways and seek your face, then you would heal the land. So, Father, we pray that you would give us, place in us the things that we need to do, that you would, can do the things that you need to do. We give you all the honor and all the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Oh, National Anthem. See, I forgot. Sorry, Mr. Porter. I don't want to miss your voice.
Sorry, it's okay. Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Over the ripples we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does this far spring a banner of white? For the land and the free and the home of the brave? Lift every voice and sing to earth and heaven, ring with the harmonies of liberty? Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies? Let it ring down loud as the rolling sea? Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us? Sing a song full of the hope that the presence has brought us? Facing the rising sun of a new day begun? Let us march on till victory is won.
All right, now you may be seated. I want to thank Pastor Anderson and Edgar Porter for those beautiful blessings and the beautiful voice. Thank you so very much. That takes us to roll call. Vanessa?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Here.
Councilmember Vidialo?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Vice Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Vanessa. All right, and that's gonna take us to Section 3, Proclamations, Acknowledgements, and Awards. We have two different types of proclamation, awards and proclamations tonight. So, we're gonna start off with the CERT graduates and the team leads, and we're gonna have Brad Potassie to help us with that.
That is a very tough act to follow. I just want to get out of the way, right off the bat. I can try to sing, it won't go well. That was exceptional. Great job, great job. So, just to everybody, my name is Brad Potassie. I'm deputy, one of the deputy chiefs of the Maricopa Fire Medical Department, and today I have an incredible honor to recognize the recent graduates of our recent CERT training program. The Community Emergency Response Team, better known as CERT, is a program that educates volunteers in the community to prepare for disasters. It engages a community in resilience and recovery, and it is instrumental in empowering our own residents within Maricopa in such skills as fire safety, light search and rescue, disaster medical operations, and a whole slew of others. CERT offers a consistent nationwide approach to volunteer training and organization, and is professional responders, and creates professional responders that we can rely on as emergency responders during a crisis situation. No single public safety entity can do it alone, and through the volunteers in the proactive community members we have in Maricopa, we can get very complicated tasks done. So, our CERT program is very robust. We have actually one of the flagship CERT programs in the state of Arizona, and it's all due to the dedication of our leadership and the volunteerism of the members. They conduct annual training every year. This training includes basic triage, so sorting of injured people, medical treatment, first aid, CPR, AED, blood pressure checks. They also talk about collision avoidance and driving. They're trained in the national standards of the incident command system. They work on basic fire department radio communications, and they also provide a critical support for us firefighters when it's 118 degrees outside. Our CERT volunteers come and provide us rehabilitation to ensure our firefighters are hydrated and fueled and safe in these dangerous environments to continue a firefight or large-scale medical response. They're also working, and they can manage shelters, and they're also trained in emergency operations centers. I just want to brag on them a little bit, not like I haven't already, but I got a whole lot to pull from. So, our CERT volunteers are extremely active in our community, and we appreciate that. They support the fire department every day in our support services. They're part, active participants in the Senior Expo, the Salsa Fest, all the major events in Maricopa. We have our CERT volunteers help in the coordination of those events and providing great support for public safety. They do fire extinguisher training for the Copper Sky employees, for the Sun Life Medical Development here in the city as well. They work and volunteer for the high school bonfires to ensure in safety for those fun events. They do water safety walks, fire prevention events, smoke detector programs, heat awareness, and a whole slew of others. So, I'd like to, at this point, turn it over to our fire marshal, Eddie Rodriguez, and he will go through and present certificates to this last graduating class, and take it from you.
Thank you, Chief. Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, it's a great honor to be here to introduce the 2020 CERT course that just was completed recently. And I'd like to present with honor our first candidate. If you can just hold your applause till they're all done, and we'll make this fast. Dan Thomas. This certificate says that they have successfully completed the Maricopa Fire and Medical Department 20-hour FEMA, Veteran Emergency Management Agency 317, Community Emergency Response Team Program, completed this day, February 2020. John Floyd Croy III. That is our 2020 graduation class. Let's give him a hand. Thank you, thank you. I'd also like to present, introduce to you our leads. Without these leads, we could not go with this program. As program manager, I really look for these leads to really assist me and manage this CERT team throughout the year. Our CERT lead, Mr. John Mulkwin, he's moved from West Phoenix in 2011. He is a retired grocery truck driver for 37 years. He joined our team back in 2015, so he has five and a half years, and he is our CERT lead, Mr. John Mulkwin.
So, one thing that we haven't done enough for these leads is recognize them, and we take responsibility for that in the department, not recognizing the volunteers the way we should have in the past. So, tonight, and Chief Lethner was gonna be here, but he had an illness in the family, so Eddie and I are gonna do it. Now that we'd like to recognize the leads, each lead will get a special recognition, but John has won our distinguished service award for his dedication and leadership to the CERT program, so.
Our next one is Mr. Bill Robertson. He moved here from Farmington, New Mexico in 2015. He is a retired fire chief, 22 years. He volunteered in New Jersey Fire Department for nine years. He's been with the program four and a half years. Mr. Bill Robertson is our training officer, he's our training lead officer, Mr. Bill Robertson.
So, and to Bill, we're presenting him the CERT Leadership Award for dedication to the Training and Exercise Division of the CERT program.
Our last one is Ms. Sherri Hamagum. Sherri moved here from Missoula, Montana in 2011. Sherri is a retired certified medical assistant, 28 years. She was a former EMT in Frenchtown Rural Fire Department. She volunteered with us in 2016, and she is four years, and she is our CERT Rehab Lead. She's a Rehab Rehabilitation Lead, Ms. Sherri Hamagum.
And for Sherri, we present you with the CERT Leadership Award for your dedication to firefighter rehab division in the CERT program and the citizens in which you serve.
And that concludes our, excuse me, that concludes our ceremony for tonight. Thank you. Thank you, members.
Can I put my fingers up here?
Tell me a Siri anything.
All right, now we're gonna move on to our proclamation portion, and this is 3.1, Proclamation 2001, Black History Month Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Marvin Brown, Councilmember Marvin Brown, down. Proclamation is from Mayor Christian Price. Whereas diversity of social identity, including racial and cultural identity, contributes positively to the development of society and is a matter of pride and celebration, and whereas Americans of African descent have made valuable and lasting contributions to our country and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas in 1976, Black History Month was adopted to honor and affirm the importance of the history of African-Americans, and to focus on the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families and communities. And whereas the city of Maricopa continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world, now, therefore, Mayor Christian Price, the city of, the mayor of the city of Maricopa, does proclaim the month of February 2020 as Black History Month in the city of Maricopa, Arizona, and we urge all citizens to join with us in celebrating the significance of Black culture in the past, present, and going forward in the future. From Mayor Christian Price. And I am awarding this to Councilmember Marvin Brown.
I'd like to thank the mayor, Madam Vice Mayor. You know, the, the history of Black America is one that should be acknowledged and appreciated because the transatlantic trade movement began 1619, when the southern colonies began the transport of African men and women from five West African countries, Benin, Ghana, Congo, Cameroon, Benin. To do what? To transfer men and women to this country to act as slaves, free labor, to build up the tobacco industry, cotton industry, and the sugar industry. Now, what that meant, it required 20,000 voyages over a period of many years, from that point to 1860, from 1619, 1860, the last slave ship, which was illegal, by the way, because it'd been banned, starting 1808. There were 12,500 men and women transported to this country as slaves. 10 million survived. Those that didn't survive died because of sickness, were thrown aboard in the Atlantic Ocean, they were fed molasses and dry bread. Sometimes with water, most times very little water, to build up the great economy of this nation. We had three presidents at that time, later years, who had hundreds of slaves. Washington said he was shameful. Madison, disgusting. Jefferson, just awful. All of them had hundreds of slaves. Now, of those slaves that came, now, in the case of Build Up Slaves, none of the foreign countries that also did, where they were in this business, the Portuguese, the Spaniards, the French, English, all were in the slave business, primarily for same purpose. It's been a sad situation because what happened when these men and women came? They were separated, husbands from wives, set to, the husband might be sent to Georgia, the wife Alabama, never to see each other again. They were not allowed to read a book. If they tried to escape, they were caught and mutilated, or in the case of a man, lynched. There were 5,000 lynchings recorded, recorded. We know there are many more than that. But through all of that, Blacks have endured in this nation. We have became musicians, scientists, medical, law, finance, construction. We built the White House. Many of you might not know that. Every phase of endeavor Blacks have endured and succeeded, government revealed they had a Black president. There have been 16 Blacks who achieved an Nobel Prize, 11 Africans, one Brit, four Americans.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Brown. And now, we're gonna have a dedication presented by this lovely lady.
Eric, are you in the room?
Yep.
Please come up. She'll get another award. Hello, everyone. My name is Joanna Vanderpoel, and I am a member of the sepia book club. Sepia, Shades of Brown, women who read books, and part of what we do with the sepia, ladies, please stand if you're in the room, and part of what we do is to donate books to our Maricopa Public Library. The books that we donate are to enrich Maricopa and the reading about African-American people. So, we've been doing this for four years, and this year, I'd like to dedicate to, come over, Eric, these two books. One is Little Leaders. There are about 40 different Black women who have influenced the culture in America for children, so that they can begin to learn about what we are about. A simple picture of a woman and a story about who she is. This book, thanks, Eric, this book is Shelley Goes to the Zoo. Once again, it's a story about a Black child going to the zoo, but what's interesting is she uses sign language. So, for those who have disabilities, those who want to know and speak in a different language, so that they can talk about their sisters and brothers, and sisters and parents, maybe not know, they'll be saying good things, though, good things, they also have to learn to spell, because they have to spell out the words. But once again, we are donating books to the library. There are also adult books that will be donated. I don't have them at the moment, but every year, we do this. We work with the library. This year, we are having a program, which is on...
February 30.
Thank you. And in that program, we will be talking about quilts, and how African-Americans escaped from freedom under the Night of the Quilt. Quilts told stories. There were stories and codes in the quilts that we built, and we would use these symbols to help people escape and know how to follow the star, follow the creek, and our children need to know that not only were we using quilts and putting stories in back then to escape from slavery, but we're still building quilts, and we build the quilts and we put in our family history, our marriages, things of that way. So, please invite your children, from five to 12, to come out this Thursday, next Thursday, next Thursday, from four to six, to be able to build a symbol of a quilt. There is an example of one outside. Joanna, forgot to bring it in.
Thank you, Joanne. That's really cool. I think that's gonna be fun for the children and for the adults as well. So, at this point, Councilman Wade has helped to put together a wonderful celebration out in the atrium. So, we're gonna take 20 minutes to go out there and enjoy some entertainment, some poetry, and just really be immersed in what it means to be part of Black History Month. And so, we invite you to come out there and join us. 20 minutes. Thank you. City Council Regular Meeting. That takes us to Item 5, report from, excuse me, Item 4, Report from the Mayor. Councilmembers, do you have anything that you'd like to report?
I'll do a moment.
Yes, Councilmember Wade.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just want to recognize, as I had mentioned earlier, Mount Moriah AME Church did their dedication two weeks ago to their new sanctuary. I remember when Mount Moriah was meeting in houses, and go back, and trailers, and they had the veteran sitter for quite a while, where they had some substance as far as the place to meet, and to see that new building, and see them move into that new building, and hear the choir speak, and the pastor has, seems to have taken on some rejuvenation. You could see it in his face, you could feel it in the service, and the spirit is certainly in the place. So, I want to acknowledge and recognize all the effort, and certainly appreciate anything that the city did to try to assist them to get to where they are today, because I know that we had the help along the way, and that we continue to do that as well, but not just with Moriah, with anyone who seeks services from us. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Manfredi.
This past Wednesday, I had the fun and exciting privilege of attending the CAG, Central Arizona Government's Regional Council. We elected a new chair, Bobby Davis, out of Star Valley, a vice chair of John Thompson from Coolidge, and Micah Powell was the Secretary of Treasury, so that's good leadership that are gonna help CAG go into the future. And the fun part that you guys will all love is the chairman of the Management Committee for CAG is a friend that we all love, and Paul Jepson is now the chairman of CAG's Management Committee. You know, he's a new city manager, well, not new, he's a city manager of Globe, and he used to be here for a very long time, as long as Vanessa probably, and then he left to go to Globe. So, he's the new chair of the Management Committee for CAG, so I just wanted to let everybody know that, if you wanted to send him an email and congratulatory thing. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Oh.
Vice Mayor, yes, I had the pleasure of, on the 31st, speaking to five of the high school and junior high kids at Pathway on Black History. And on the 30th, along with several of my colleagues, I attended dinner at the MUSD Building. I attended a dinner at the MUSD Building, which was sponsored by Superintendent Lopman, just thanking Maricopa's leadership.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Videlo.
Yes, I'd just like to... I'm going to let Nancy talk about the Senior Expo because that's her baby cell. But I would just like to thank city staff, Nathan, your crew, Brandy. There's a million names, sir. Everybody who was involved. Thank you very much for what you guys do. First time, it was awesome. Thank you. And Nancy will tell you more, I'm sure.
Anyone else? All right, I'll go ahead before the mayor. I did... Councilmember Videlo and myself were heavily involved in the Senior Info Expo along with the Age Friendly Committee, which is a phenomenal committee, providing a lot of different services for seniors. The unofficial, unofficial number that I heard was 451 people were served lunch that day. 451. Who came and got services for the seniors. And then there were well over 50 vendors. And that meant like about 100 different vendors serving at each, within the entire event. So it was really very, very successful. I echo what Councilmember Videlo said. Nathan, phenomenal job. I know that it was Brandy and her staff, or your staff and staff members, but it was really, really well done. And I certainly appreciate it because I heard so many wonderful pieces of feedback in terms of ways, a variety of ways, that seniors got the resources that they needed and walked away very happy. So it was very good. And so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And then, myself and Councilwoman Gussie attended a action, Maricopa Steam Foundation Meeting, where we don't have anything official to announce tonight, but I'm telling you, there's some pretty exciting stuff. Councilwoman Gussie is on that board. And we had some really interesting conversations with a lady who is a professional in steam and all aspects of it and wants to do some wonderful stuff in the city of Maricopa. And I'm very, very excited about that. So I found that to be very successful. I went to the Art Council Art Fest and had a lovely, lovely time. So I thank the Maricopa Art Circle for putting that together. It was held at the Performing Arts Center at Maricopa High School. There was poetry, kind of crazy poetry. So you got to be ready for it. There was a chorus. There was theater. It was all the filmmaking. It was very, very wonderful. And it was my pleasure to attend it. And I hope that you all can take part in that in the future. Senior Game Night. Speaking of seniors again, had 57 people. That's like a record, I believe. It's amazing. We got to break into a second room, I'm thinking, Nathan. I don't know. Always asking for stuff, aren't we? And then I went to the MUSD Leader, Community Leadership Dinner, which was very good, where they shared with the community leaders. And their chief stall was there. Several others from the city were there. And we learned what their plans were for the next 10 years. And it's pretty exciting. And they're doing a really good job working around the fact that the bond had not been approved. And what does that look like? And so they gave us some information to share with people as questions come up. And then I just want to bring your attention to the fact that the Senior Lunch and Learn in February is going to be really phenomenal. The Pinal County Expert on Social Media and Internet Safety is going to be speaking for an hour and a half. I hear his presentation is really very good and very informative and scares the bejeebies out of you. So if you're interested in doing that, that's on the third Friday in February at Copper Sky. Starts at 11 o'clock for lunch and the speaker starts at 11:30. And that's all I have. So mayor, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just briefly here, I attended the Chamber Awards banquet that happened this past weekend. And I just want the opportunity to see some of the small business owners in the community. And then finally, I just wanted to let everyone know as you announced earlier that I'm here in Washington DC tonight. I'm representing the city of Maricopa and all 91 cities and towns that are incorporated in the state of Arizona, the state of Arizona, here. And we are meeting with a variety of other state delegations as we continue to move the Arizona League Cities and towns forward. Had the opportunity to... I kind of learned that when you are on a plane with nine members of the congressional delegation, that the odds of you sitting by one of them is really high. And it just so happens that I did. And I certainly did miss the opportunity to spend a five-hour flight expounding all of the needs that the city of Maricopa has. And I just haven't expected any meeting I've ever had here in Washington DC. So anyways, I just wanted to let you know that I think that was time well spent. But I'll have a report for you here in two weeks, what we were able to accomplish here in this very brief flying. So thank you.
All right, thank you, mayor. So that takes us to Item 5. Report from the city manager.
Mayor and council, I have a few comments later in the agenda, but not at this moment.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, that takes us to Item 6. Call to the public. Just a couple of things for you to know that there is a three-minute timer stationed on the podium. And I'll start that as soon as the speaker begins to speak. And you'll see it run down from green, yellow, red. When you see yellow, you have 30 seconds left. So that gives you an idea of how much longer you have to talk to. So please stay with the three-minute time. And I don't have any speaker cards, so the floor is open to the public if there's anyone that wants to come forward. Judith, I was hoping you were going to come forward, so I didn't talk about your gig.
Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm Elizabeth Howell. And I'm kind of disappointed that everybody left. I want to call everyone's attention to the Second Annual Free Shred-a-thon canned food drive this Saturday at Copper Sky from 10 to 2. You're welcome to bring all of your papers that need shredding. If it's not papers, we don't want it because it won't go through the shredder in the truck that we're getting. But it's a good event. It's a nice way to replenish the food for the food bank. And it's a... I know there are a lot of people in town that have expressed a desire to have an event like this so they get rid of those boxes of paper that they didn't want to put in the trash. Okay? So we'll look for you Saturday from 10 to 2. There will be signage on the streets directing you. But we'll be in the part of the north parking lot that's not paved. Most, if you drive in from Bolin Road, it's the first entrance there on the right in the unpaved parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else at this time? All right. Seeing none, that'll take us to Item 7.1. The Minutes, Approval of Minutes of January 21, 2020. Council, may I have a motion? Have a motion? Do I have a second? In a second? Motion in a second. Council, is there any other further discussion on the minutes? All right, seeing none. All that are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And so the motion carries. That takes us to the Consent Agenda. Council, do you have anything at this moment that you would like to pull from the consent agenda or any questions that you would like to ask on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve? So moved?
Second.
I should say, may I have a motion to approve Item 8.1 to 8.3 on the Consent Agenda? Yes, ma'am. Motion in a second. Is there any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those who are in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? That motion carries. That moves us on to the regular agenda. We're going to first start with Item 9.1. Presentation 20-04. Mayor and City Council shall hear a presentation by Community Services Director Nathan Uliot on the Global Water Partnership. This is for discussion only. Thank you, Nathan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, and everyone here that's still here. Thanks for hanging out. I want to really frankly brag about what I think is a program I'm very proud of and also for the support and the partnerships we've built through the program here in the city of Maricopa over the last six to eight months. It is a program that allows youth in our schools to come to Copper Sky and receive a free swim lesson, a free water safety lesson as a part of their school day. So I want to go through that. I will go through the slides relatively quickly because there's a really, I feel, powerful video that tells the story better than I could. And I want to leave some time at the end for a special announcement. So we call the program Safe in the Water. You're never really safe in the water at all times, but it's designed to remove all the barriers that prevent children from being safe in the water or for having a great opportunity to be safe in the water. We've worked to build that relationship with the school district to bring the kids down to the Copper Sky pool as part of the school day. It's a four-week program, which basically is four separate field trips, but acts as a full program. And the goal is to ensure that every Maricopa-area child is assessed, their swim level is assessed, and they receive a free water safety lesson if needed by the time they hit third grade. I think if you remember back to our original presentation, which was in last March, March of 19, we talked about third grade being a key area or a key timeframe to make sure kids are safe in the water so that they don't grow up without lessons. You start to worry about being embarrassed and things like that. So we want to get the kids in before they hit third grade. Is it clicking? So the primary goal of the curriculum was to provide the ability to return to the wall if they fell in the water unattended. That was our goal. There's lots of other things they learned. They learned about calling 911. They learned about what to do if you see someone else near the water, things like that. Reach, throw, don't go. So if you can't reach, then try to throw something to help them, but don't go yourself because you'll likely become a victim as well. So that was our goal, though, is if you fell in the water by the end of it, by the end of this four weeks, did you have a good shot at getting out? And 50% of the parents, when we did a pre-survey, said that they were not confident their child would survive if they fell in the water unattended. This is out of 198 kids. So that was, again, that component, again, giving kids a real chance. And on the first day, 160, as you can read, of the 198 were afraid to jump into the water. That's part of the program. Overcoming the fear of water itself is really key to being able to learn. And only 15 of the 198 had had some sort of formal swim lesson before the program started. So that's, that shows you right there, there's some barrier there, whether it's time, cost, or otherwise. There's a barrier there. So that's what this program is designed to remove. So our secondary goals include increasing children's confidence, reducing their fear of water, but also increasing parent peace of mind. How many people are afraid that what would happen if my kid did fall in the water? We wanted to give that to parents to say that, hey, I think my kid's got a good shot now if the unthinkable happens or they're at a friend's house or an aunt's house, someone's not paying attention, and my kid fell in, I think they got a shot. And then also to show the value of the program as it's a pilot, to show the value of the program and using school time to execute the program and remove that barrier. And so our outcomes were pretty staggering, in my opinion. I'll leave that to the judges. But 190 out of 198 students who participated were able to jump into the water over their head and return to the wall. So that's after 100, or after about half of them weren't even able to get into the water the first day. 100% of parents we surveyed saw their child's confidence increase as a result of the program. And 100% indicated they thought it was a great use of school time and well worth that time. And 89%, up from 50%, now thought their kids had a chance to survive. So I think we nailed it. So what's next? We're going to continue in the spring to expand the program with our goal of bringing three other schools in, so going from two to three in the spring. And then we'll start again in the fall and hopefully have all of the MUSD schools in next year and then start to move into the charter schools and make sure that this is an avenue for us to continue to expand the program. And while we have some great support from our Global Water Partners, we want to continue to build that so it's a sustainable program and it becomes a part of the fabric of our community. So by 2122, we hope to have a nice, sustainable operating model in place that won't be dependent on one giver or gift. So... All right, so we're going to watch a video. It's compared to some other things. It's about five minutes, six minutes, but I think it really tells the story and you get to see the people that it impacted. And then we'll be back right after.
No.
Yes. I would not feel comfortable with it at all.
Disagree.
I'm not really sure if she's going to be able to swim.
I don't think my daughter would have survived if she fell into the water.
When we first started off, we learned that a lot of kids haven't had any swim lessons. So the curriculum we really worked on is water safety, learning to get comfortable in the water, how to deal with a situation, learning to pick up toys, learning to float on our backs, our bellies, learning how to do arm strokes, how to exit the water, how to jump in the water and things like that.
Right now, they're jumping in the deep end and just seeing the confidence in her and her not being afraid of the water is amazing. So yeah, I definitely think that this has helped her a lot with her confidence.
I've noticed his change around water tremendously. Now, he doesn't even hesitate.
He just jumps in, and he knows he can come back up. He knows how to swim underwater. Like, his confidence level and his attitude around water is just tremendously gone through the scales since he started.
She's much more confident, and she's going underwater now. She actually today jumped in the pool to one of the lifeguards, which I have to say, they're amazing with the kids, building that trust, especially for fearful kids.
The instructors did a great job. I love how they have different categories for the children. They don't have them all in one group. They have them separate with skill level, and that worked out great.
There were a few kids who were really excited. Those are probably the kids who have pools in their backyard, or who had a lot of experience with swimming. There were other kids who said, uh-uh, I don't know how to swim, I can't, or I'm gonna bring my floaties. And we're like, well, we're gonna see how this program goes. I had to really talk to them about, when we're trying new things, sometimes we're uncomfortable. And we're gonna go, we're gonna make sure that you're safe. That's my job. That's Coach K's job. That's the program's job, to make sure you're gonna be safe. And we're gonna follow directions. We're gonna listen, and we're gonna learn. And even when we're a little bit uncomfortable, we're gonna try. Once they got here, and they saw how structured it was, and how organized it was, they did feel safe. And they got in, and we saw an amazing amount of confidence grow in them, even after the first session. The smiles were huge. They were really proud of themselves. And as teachers, we're gonna use that through the whole year. Remember when things were hard, and you were nervous, and you pushed yourself through that, and said, maybe I can't today, but tomorrow I will be. They were so excited about coming back for Lesson Two. And then they came back to school saying, can we do this every day?
I think it's a good investment of time.
I definitely think this was a great use of school time.
This is a great opportunity for the kids, even during school.
You know, being a working parent, it's hard to make time to always get out with your children, teach them, and you're always worried about them, because it's Arizona. There's pools everywhere. They're gonna wanna swim. Really great for them to have this as a school program, to teach them.
Kids love this program, because our swim day is on Thursday. Each teacher had their own swim day, so only one class at a time from our school gets to swim. And they always called Thursday the best day ever, because they got to go swimming. I have students from last year coming up, how come they're getting to go, and we never did? And I still don't know how to swim. Those are my second graders from last year, saying, I wanna go. And so, I really want this program to spread, and have all kids have this opportunity. It's just such an important part of living here. What I would say to any of my fellow colleagues and educators, please talk to your principal, talk to your school about bringing this into your building, working with your PE teachers, and giving this experience to the kids. It will translate into everything else you do academically.
Thank you, Global Water and Copper Sky. You have made my son an excellent swimmer, confidence good, and I can't wait for my youngsters to enjoy this opportunity as well.
Global Water, I want to thank you for letting this happen, for being a partnership with the school district and Copper Sky. It's helped my kid out tremendously, and I'm sure it's helped all the kids out tremendously. Thank you.
Global Water has done an amazing job of creating a program that is really organized, and what they can do in four weeks has been kind of magical. And creating the confidence in these kids, and giving them a skill that's gonna go for their whole life.
Thank you. So, that's a little five-minute video, but I think it tells a lot about what we had. And I need to thank our staff, Josh Bowman, who's now in Risk Management, but he was at the oversight of Copper Sky, and James Schultz, who has really done a great job with our pool. We're lucky to have him. They really helped make this program happen. It was a crazy idea that I had, and it happens at other places, but I'm like, let's get it going. And the amount of time that they got it turned around with the amount of, you know, you've got the city and the school, so two big players. And then you've got a wonderful partner, Ron Fleming, and John Corwin, and then Beth Huerta, who's here today, really just, they came to us looking for what they could do, and it was really close to the conversation we had around this program and how do we start it. And they let us do it in the middle of a budget year where we didn't have a budget. So, wouldn't have started it without them. So, I want to give Beth the opportunity to come up and say a few words, and thank her and Global Water for their vision, and their support, and their trust.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. When Nathan approached us, we were super interested to see what would happen. Now that this program has come to fruition, we are ecstatic, to say the least. We feel the value that it has brought to the community, not only for the children, but the parents, has been amazing. And so, we're so excited to partner again this year to support the program. And I look forward to see what he can do. So, thank you so much, and I'm excited about this partnership.
She didn't mention it, but just recently, Ron, and John, and Beth, they agreed to actually up the funding for the next year, so it's gonna be $20,000, which means we'll be able to expand. And I should mention, I'm not gonna present on it tonight, but they are also supporting other programs for our teens that are fifth quarters, which are after football games. They've supported that and allowed us to start those programs as well, as supported many of our events. So, again, thank you to them, and thank you for their time.
Thank you, Nathan. Council, did you have any questions or concerns that you wanted to? All right, perfect. I want to thank Beth. If you'll take my thank you, back to Global Water, to Ron and John, I mean, what a phenomenal program. And you said you saw this previously in another area, because I have never heard of this type of a program. You sat down too fast, Nathan.
All right.
I've never seen a program such as this before, and so, I'm impressed with this.
I think it's one of those old becoming new. When I was in school, we walked down the street and went to, and got swim lessons in Oregon, so...
Really?
Yeah, I think it's happened before. I think it's, as education shifts, we lose some of those holistic elements about what makes us good adults, and, you know, that's why kids don't learn these types of things. So, we started this at the Croc Center a couple of years ago, which is where I came from in South Phoenix, and we partnered with Roosevelt School District. But we didn't have the same type of support as we've had with the school district and the principals at the two pilot schools, who, it's, the hardest thing is getting people to say yes sometimes, but they said yes right away. Their PE teachers were on board, their first-grade teachers were on board, and it's a really good example of, you know, what partnership can do. The funding provided allowed us to remove all the barriers and...
Absolutely.
Budget constraints for us and for the district. So, yeah, it's not a brand-new idea, but the way we're executing it is kind of new again.
Pretty phenomenal. Thank you. Thank you very much.
While I'm here, anything, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to Agenda Item 9.2, which is a public hearing, 20-01. The mayor and city council shall hear the public comments on a proposal for street name changes within a portion of the Heritage District redevelopment area, Maricopa Townsite Subdivision. And Rudy Lopez is going to give us a presentation.
Vice Mayor, Mayor, council members. Vice Mayor, if you can somewhat just open up the public hearing for comments, and then close if there's none.
Yes. So, at this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing for comments. If you have any comments or questions, and you'd like to come forward on this subject. All right. So, at this point, we're going to close the public hearing. And I'll check to make sure my council members don't have any questions or comments at this point. Did you want it at this point? We could do it either place.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, it's the next agenda item. That's for action.
Okay, that's fine.
We do have a brief staff presentation, if that's okay.
Perfect, okay. So, we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is 9.3, Resolution 20-04. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Maricopa, Arizona, approving the renaming of the following streets located within the subdivision of the Maricopa Townsite: West Maricopa Avenue to Heritage Lane, West Burkett Avenue to West Stagecoach Lane, West Arizona Avenue to West Arizona Lane, a portion of West Maricopa-Castagrand Highway to West Mercado Street, and North Pershing Street to North Main Street. This is for discussion and only, and I'll let Rudy take it from here.
Discussion and action.
Oh, thank you.
Vice Mayor, Mayor, council members, thank you. There's a lot of information there, but legally, we have to kind of announce it like that. Before your request for proposed street name changes within the Heritage District, Maricopa Townsite Subdivision, as initiated by city council back in November of 2019, the purpose of this request is to rename several street names within the subdivision. And the goal of this was, back then, and it still is, is somewhat rebrand that Maricopa Townsite Subdivision to create strong, identifiable street names within that area that creates that sense of place that we're trying to achieve, revitalization within that subdivision. And lastly, to also reduce public safety concern, there's an existing street name out there, that's Maricopa Avenue, that currently conflicts with another street name out there, which is North South Road, Maricopa Road, on John Wayne Parkway, Old Alignment. So, for public safety concerns, we can't have two same street names on two different somewhat accesses, in a way. So, for public safety, that was being renamed as well. You can see that these are the existing street names, which you have Pershing Street, Maricopa Avenue, Arizona Avenue, Burkett Avenue, Maricopa-Castagrand Highway. And this is the Maricopa Townsite Subdivision that was plotted way before, you know, back in the 20s and 30s itself. The initial proposal by staff included, as we went through this process, was Main Street for Pershing Street, Market Street for a segment of Maricopa-Castagrand Highway, Wells Lane for Burkett Avenue, and Maricopa Avenue, well, we didn't have much options there, so we kind of let the public in the area, well, residents within the area, help us decide what proposed names should be for Maricopa Avenue itself. Here's the overall summary of the public outreach that staff conducted over the past three months since November itself. This included with initiation of council, giving us the blessing to move forward with that back in November, followed by notification afterwards, within weeks of giving us the blessing. We went ahead and notified all those residents and properties within that subject area, both in English and Spanish, mailing drop-off postcards to the residents. A lot of those residents don't have direct mail as they go, they're being forced to go peel box. So, we dropped off signage postings in both English and Spanish, and also somewhat newspaper posting. So, we kind of went all out in terms of notification, making sure that every resident was aware of the information that was being presented to them in both English and Spanish. The information that was presented to them gave them information of the upcoming neighborhood meeting, an open house, to, one, get input on what we're trying to do out here, and to also let them know of all the major meeting dates that was gonna happen at the time. So, there was an open house meeting in November, and then lastly, a recommendation meeting from the Heritage District Committee on December 12. The time that we asked for public input on Arizona Avenue, as we didn't have a suggested name, we did ask, we gave guidance to residents in terms of, these are kind of like our criteria when it comes to either suggesting comments on the proposed street names, or asking what, or proposing what street names for Maricopa Avenue. Our criteria was very simple, where, one, we want to make sure that the proposed street name has some type of history, to reflect history in place in that area. Two, typically with addressing procedures and street names, there's a limited number of characters, no more than 20 characters, including spacing, because there's only so much it could fit on the street sign itself. Cannot be copyrighted. The street name cannot be copyrighted. It's not political or offensive. And the name proposed or suggested is not an existing street name that we have out there that may conflict. If it's somewhat of, you know, Tony Street with T-O-N-I or T-O-N-Y, those are very similar in nature, obviously. Actually, I'm gonna go back. Then lastly, followed by, as we went to the Heritage Committee on December 12, staff recommended to Heritage Committee, and the committee accepting the recommendation from staff and the public, with the exception of Stagecoach Street. So, we went to the committee on that date, and the committee asked that one of the streets in there, which was proposed as, I apologize, as Pershing Street, we were proposing Main Street, they came back and suggested that we should probably look at that one being called Stagecoach Street itself. In addition, through the process of our review, we also suggested that we got information...
Excuse me, you said Pershing Street, and Stagecoach. You meant Burkett, right?
I'm sorry, no. The committee did recommend initially it was Stagecoach Street for Pershing Street.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I apologize. In addition, as part of our process, we saw an opportunity for Market Street. Initially, we proposed Market Street, but we found some great value and suggestions input that we looked at Mercado Street as one of the options for Market Street, because Mercado is translated to Market in Spanish. And also, it does pay homage to the old Mercantile store that was on Honeycutt Road and John Wayne Parkway that was demolished probably 2007. So, here's the recommended list of street names for the area. West Maricopa Avenue to West Heritage Lane, West Arizona Avenue for West Arizona Lane, West Maricopa-Castagrand Highway to West Mercado Street, North Pershing Street to Main Street, and then lastly, West Burkett Avenue to West Stagecoach Lane. We do agree with the committee's recommendation, with the exception of Stagecoach Streets, which they recommended for Pershing Street. We actually think it conflicts with the idea of still keeping Main Street and Market in terms of sense of place and strong identifying area. We actually recommended that to kind of somewhat be in the middle of the Heritage Committee, to using Stagecoach Street for Burkett Avenue, instead of the initially proposed Wells Lane out there. Still honoring the committee's request for also keeping the rebranding effort of Main Street and Mercado Street itself. So, we looked at committees kind of man in the middle, and initially, we got some support to let them know that we're gonna go on a different route. Still honoring Stagecoach Street, but we can use Stagecoach Street for Burkett Avenue.
Can you tell us what the report was? Was it unanimous from the Heritage Committee?
It was unanimous with the requirement of asking to put Pershing Street as Stagecoach Street on that one. So, we worked with them, got some feedbacks from committee members out there that we could still honor Stagecoach Street, not for Pershing Street, but maybe for another side street within the area itself. Vice Mayor, Mayor, council members, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if there's any...
And if our sound booth guy would leave up this map, please.
Yeah, that'd be great. Council, any questions, any concerns, discussion? Councilwoman Gussi.
I had a couple of discussions with the city manager earlier. I had asked why this area, which has always been predominantly Latino, why some of the families weren't honored with their names on those streets. For example, the Rodriguezes are on there, Gomesses are on there, the Bandeans are in this area, all those names. And I was told that apparently, and I also verified this by two committee members, that when you name them after one family, maybe there'll be another family that would be insulted that they weren't that street, particular street, because the Gomesses and the Rodriguezes are on the same street. So, they felt maybe that it wasn't wise to move in that direction, which I agree with them, if they felt that strongly about it. But at the same time, this is a predominantly Latino area. In 2000, the census revealed that 90% of the population in this area, in the city of Maricopa, was Latino. By 2020, they became the minority. They were 10% of the population. While I understand that the family surnames were explored and discussed in the committees, my suggestion would be to honor the heritage of the Latino people by honoring one of these streets and naming it Cesar Chavez. It's great that today we had the event that we had, because it goes along with the same premise. Cesar Chavez was an American labor leader, a community organizer, and Latino-American civil rights activist. He co-founded the National Farmers Workers Association, which was later renamed the United Farmers Workers Union. He was born in Yuma, Arizona, and he died in San Luis, Arizona. He was 66 years of age. He received the Presidential Medal of Freedom in 1994, 20 years after his death. He served in the United States Navy in 1944 during World War II. And in May of 2012, the Navy launched the first US Navy ship named after Latino, Cesar Chavez, the T-A-K-E-14. So, my recommendation is that we rename one of these streets under his name, because of his legacy, and this being a predominantly Latino community.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
We spoke, and we would recommend that the street that was tentatively designed to be named West Arizona Lane, which would run from Plainview to what is currently Pershing and will be Main Street, be the name, the street that would be named that, and staff is comfortable with that recommendation, if it meets with the pleasure of the city council.
All right, thank you, city manager. Thank you, Councilwoman Gussi. Any additional conversations, questions, comments? All right, so with that, I look for a motion. We need probably the amendment.
Yes. The amendment would be that the recommendation of West Arizona Lane be removed and be Cesar Chavez from North Plainview Street through Burkett as it hits Main Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I'd be honored if his name was taken into consideration. And I'm sorry, what, did you say, the characters? How many characters?
It was limited to 20 quick, 20 characters with spaces. We should be okay with that name.
Yeah, it's 14 characters.
It's fine.
All right, second, we have a second. Any additional questions, conversation? See, yes. Councilmember Wade.
If we could ask a quick clarification?
Yes.
Is it lane or street?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, probably preferably because of that one's probably considered more lane, Cesar Chavez Lane, as that's not as like the Main Street. We have Main Street, Plainview Street, the smaller roadways as Cesar Chavez, be better suited as lane itself.
Are we comfortable with that, Council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my second still stands.
Councilmember Wade.
So, Madam Vice Mayor, and Councilwoman Gussi, I think this is an excellent choice for where we would honor Cesar Chavez and the Hispanic community. As a member of the organization Chicanos Policales, which was formulated as a result of Cesar Chavez's activism in the community, it's, actually, it's about time. And so, it's good to see this come about, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. And one last thing, how are these streets gonna, are they just gonna be put up once it's okay? At the end of March is Cesar Chavez's birthday, and we have Cesar Chavez Foundation, Pinellas County Cesar Chavez Foundation. I would love to invite them for the unveiling of this.
Council, if I may, there is a process to go through the 911 changes, but we can certainly have a faux dedication ceremony or something like that. We can leave both names up until we get the final changes through, and we can accommodate that request.
All right, anything else? So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? I like yes better than no, but all right. All right, so that motion carries.
Thank you.
That moves us on to Item 9.4, Public Hearing 20-02. The mayor and city council shall hear a public comment for the purpose of considering a Section 5311 Transit Program, Section 5311 Grant Application from the Federal Transit Administration through the Arizona Department of Transportation that will be used to continue operation of the transit system. So, again, this is a public hearing, and if anyone wishes to come forward and discuss this, they'll have an opportunity. I'm gonna ask Cosi up for discussion.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'd just like to introduce you, Ms. Judy Ramos. She's our new revitalization and transit coordinator. She'll be presenting you with this public hearing. Comment. Prior to coming to Maricopa, Ms. Ramos worked for City of Chandler Neighborhood Service for 15 years. So, Judy?
Vice Mayor, Mayor, and members of council, I just want to say that I am, you know, really pleased I've enjoyed my time working here, and I look forward to a lot of great projects and getting to know each and every one of you. So, with that, you may now open the public hearing, and I'll be available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Going to open the public hearing. At this time, if you would like, you may come forward and speak on this topic and this topic only. Seeing no one, we're gonna close the public hearing. And that'll... Seeing no one, we're going to close the public hearing, and that'll move us on to the next item. Thank you very much. Next item is Item 9.5, A Resolution 20-05. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Maricopa, Arizona, approving and adopting a development agreement between the city of Maricopa and Copper Sky Commercial Senior Housing LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company, Copper Sky Senior Housing, Copper Sky Commercial Mixed Use LLC, and Arizona Limited Liability Company, Copper Sky Mixed Use North, Copper Sky Commercial Mixed Use South LLC, and Arizona Limited Liability Company, Copper Sky Mixed Use South, and Shay Connolly Development LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company Shay Connolly, in compliance with ARS 9-500.05, and authorizing the city manager to execute the exhibits and related documents, including the purchase and sale agreements in a form substantially similar to the documents presented before mayor and city council. This is for discussion and action, and I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Horst at this point.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. Before I make the presentation, so I don't forget, I would like to acknowledge first your leadership in what is now culminating almost a year-long effort. Many of staff in all branches, from finance to the legal, Dennis and Tina have been terrific, our development teams, our economic teams, Jennifer Bostian's here with us. She was our enforcer, so to speak. Whenever people got too slow, she was out there cracking the whip to get them going again. But I'm delighted to present this project to you. By way of background, this project will consist of four phases. The first phase will include a senior housing facility, which will take care of both independent, dependent, and memory care units. This project in and of itself is a $40 million investment. It will employ upwards of 200 people, many of which are citizens already skilled to fulfill, whether they be dieticians, therapists, nurses, all kinds of other support staff positions, administrators, et cetera, who currently travel to other cities for employment, who can stay home and spend less time on the 347. That's got to be some, worth a lot just right there, right?
Yes, it is.
The second phase, which frankly will start within months, more than likely, no more than six months, but more closer to three months after the senior housing, will be the, what we call the north phase, which is the phase north of Martin Luther King, which will consist of about 350 plus or minus apartments, but 16,000 square feet of retail on the bottom floor, boutique shops, restaurants, diners, et cetera, apartments on the second, third, and fourth floor. These are market-rate apartments, they are not subsidized in any way, shape, or form. Martin Luther King itself will be another multimillion-dollar investment, as that road will be reconstructed to a four-lane road, have a very large greenbelt in the middle, not only for aesthetics, but for also events. It will be designed so that if we pop up tents for food markets, or whatever those things may be, that it could be just a pleasant place to demonstrate art, et cetera, et cetera. The south end will be a mirror image of the north end, same number of units, another 16,000 square feet of retail. Both units will be supported by structured parking garages, so we won't have large fields of asphalt, we certainly don't want that in a nice park setting. And then the final phase will be some additional senior casitas that will be in and around and support people next to the senior housing. In total, the total economic impact would be 24.1 million to Maricopa's economy each and every year, 221.3 million over the first 10 years of operations. It will create 271 new jobs with a 9.7 million in annual payroll by 2023. Now imagine 271 more jobs in our community, and the spending power they can bring to smart local businesses, large and small. The multifamily housing would bring in a combined annual income of $42 million. 14 million of that will be spent on taxable purchases, including purchases within the development and elsewhere in Maricopa. So, we're bringing an additional spending power just from the residents living there, not from the tourists, not from the people shopping, not from people visiting the site or visiting the retail, but just the people living in that community of $14 million a year. The hard construction cost of the balance of the project, not counting the senior center, is $127 million over three years. This would generate a one-time economic impact of 147 million in Maricopa, supporting close to 1,200 jobs over the two to three years this will be built, with $59 million in payroll. Many of those people who will be employed to construct this will be local employees, contractors, vendors, suppliers, et cetera. Project would also generate additional tax revenues, predominantly in property and sales tax. Direct and employee taxes to the city are estimated to be 13.4 million over the next 10 years, so roughly 1.3 million each year to the city, which means we can improve roads, public health and safety, parks and recreation, quality of life, all those things that we can do, and we're doing it without raising anyone's taxes. Everyone is a benefactor of that. The incentive, if we want to call it that, is an ask of $3.75 million. So, my question is, is it worth spending $3.7 million one time for a $14 million return each and every year, 221 million over the first 10 years? I also want to say that the investment that we are giving comes from this project itself. It does not come from the pockets of the taxpayers. It does not come out of our bank account as a city, it does not come out of our investment portfolio, it comes from the people who are actually building the project, we're taking their dollars, giving a little bit of it back to them, otherwise, it wouldn't happen. So, but I want to be clear that we're not writing a check, we're not doing any of those type of things. Our investment includes in-kind staff time, where we would review plans and do inspections and other type of things. Impact fees will be deferred for a period of time and then paid back over time. And again, the initial investment with the return investment will take 1.5 years to recoup that 3.75, and then it's in the black from there. The total square foot to be constructed in all of the projects is nearly 1.359 million square feet, which is significant. One other thing I'd like to say, this coupled with the La Quinta, and you will recall when we did the La Quinta deal, that there is an option for a second hotel, and we have the 10 acres on the corner that we're still looking for other opportunities to come. This will leverage our ability to use Copper Sky for larger regional events, tournaments, to get people to come to our community, to spend dollars, to buy gas, to go to restaurants, to stay overnight, coupled with the amenities that Auction and others provide, going to concerts, et cetera, et cetera. So, when the day wakes up and someone says, what do you want to do today, when they wake up in Chandler, or when they wake up in Tempe, and they say, let's do some fun this weekend, let's go to Maricopa. So, all that's not even leveraged into this, the tourist and the event tourism and the event that comes from that. So, you have the full details in front of you, this has been out to the public in various formats, in the printed press and presentations, and here, large groups, and we're, we'd be happy if the council would support this and move this project forward. And if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to address them at this time.
Council, any questions? Comments?
Get it done.
Get it done. Seeing none, I'd accept the motion.
Time to stop talking and start walking.
That's right. Oh, well, Councilmember Manfredi.
You know, this is something we've been working on for a very long time, and when we mention it online, and we say apartments are coming, when we say, you know, new developments coming to Copper Sky, some people get a little up in arms with us and get a little upset at the apartment aspect. But these are market-rate apartments where people will be able to grow and live in Maricopa and stay in Maricopa. And a personal story is, I have a 21-year-old daughter who makes pretty good money, she doesn't want to buy a house, but she still lives with me, and I would like her to have her own apartment, and I think she would like her own apartment going forward, but she likes Maricopa, she loves the city, and she wants to stay here, all her friends are here, but there's nowhere for her to go. So, an apartment complex like, apartment complex like this makes sense. The fact that it's going to have down the center, which you didn't mention, is a whole walkway where they can have festival and Martin Luther King Boulevard, is it Boulevard? Yes. Boulevard is going to be a whole spectacle of art and, and a lot of stuff there, it's going to be a beautiful sight for it, so I, you know, approve and I'm going.
I'll add to that, City Manager Horst and myself, and I think there was somebody else, maybe Councilmember Brown, we're at the Chamber Breakfast, and we had the general manager of one of the banks in town indicate that she's new to town. When she moved here, she was hoping that she could rent an apartment and figure out where she wanted to live, what subdivision, but we had no apartments. And so, people like general managers who come to town, are new to town, they want to figure out where they want to live. That's a perfect example of someone, she, she was just talking to me the other day, she said, I'm so excited about that Copper Sky, but I bought my house. So, she's already moved on, but it's just an example of how exciting this project is going to be from that aspect, but in many, many other ways. So, any other one, any other questions, comments?
Move to the top.
All right, given that, I'll take a motion.
Move to the right.
Most of them moved in second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, oh, this is for a roll call?
Yeah.
Thank you, Vanessa. I heard that chitter over there.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Vidiello?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Onward.
Are you sleepy?
I'm hanging in there.
All right, so I want to thank you for attending. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second? All right.
That's me.
Meeting, okay, there you go. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.
Thank you.